Get up and leave to go get more water there, right?
Yeah, but you're gonna have to leave because you drank that.
Good morning. I call to order the Board of Supervisors meeting of Tuesday, January 24th, 2012. At this time, I would like to have Supervisor Holmes lead us in the flag salute.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'd like to ask that our Clerk of the Board, Anne Holman, give us our statement of meeting procedures.
Welcome to the Placer County Board of Supervisors meeting of January 24th, 2012. Agendas are available on the wall outside this meeting room. If you are here to speak on an issue not appearing on the agenda, you may do so during the public comment period. There's a three-minute time limit per speaker. The Board is not permitted to take action on items addressed under public comment. When you speak, clearly state your name and address for the record. All items on the agenda will be open for the public to address before final action is taken. There's a three-minute time limit per speaker, which will be monitored by a timer on the podium. If there is a person speaking on behalf of a group with no other testimony from another member of the group, please identify yourself as such, and your time may be extended at the pleasure of the Board. Keep in mind that the Chairman has discretion of limiting the total discussion time on any item. If you are hearing impaired, we have listening devices available. It is requested that all pagers and cellphones be either turned off or put in the silent mode. Thank you for your participation and cooperation.
Thank you. Now is the time for public comments, so anyone in the audience may address the Board on any item not on this agenda. Please limit your comments to three minutes. If, for some reason, public comment should exceed our 15-minute time limit at the beginning of the meeting, it will be taken up at the end of regular session. So at this time, I would open the floor to any public comment.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Board. My name's Andy Fisher. Generally, when I'm before you, it's because I work for you and your Parks Department, but I have a different story to tell this morning. It's a remarkable story. I think it needs to be told, and to begin with that story, your Health and Human Services Department Children's System of Care finalized the adoption of my three children in May of 2011. Persia is now seven years old, Anthony is six years old, and Phoebe is four years old. And I'd originally hoped to have them here today, but they have the sniffles, so they're at home, but otherwise very healthy and happy, and we're very thankful. Through the process, we learned that it's a tremendous balancing act on the part of your department to facilitate a new family. It's a balancing act between the rights of the biological family, the interest of the children, the legal process, and fostering the cohesion of a new family without being constantly intrusive. And I just want to say that I think your departments and staff did a masterful job of balancing all that. It was a great experience, and I want to thank the staff, the medical staff, the social workers. I won't mention names, they have sensitive jobs, but all of them that work with the Fisher family know who they are, and we had a great experience working with all of them. I think they're great professionals. And also the partnering agencies, Sierra Forever Families, Commissioner John Ross, who shepherded the whole process through the legal system, and the leadership of your Board and the management at HHS. I just want to thank very much. Why, you might ask, if I waited seven months to stand up here and tell this story? Well, it's not the whole story. Forty-two years ago this month, the same department finalized my adoption to my parents. So I just wanted to say that if you've ever had a bad day, if you've ever had a discouraging day at work, know that you are at a profound level impacting families in that way, and so I thank you on behalf of three generations of the Fisher family for that.
Andy, thank you.
Jennifer? Hey, Andy. Congratulations and thank you, but if you want to take the family to a really neat park, I've got some recommendations for you.
Thank you, Andy. You're just, I'm in awe. Thank you for all you've done. Yes, sir.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Board. I am Major Ralph Jimenez with the Salvation Army, the local Salvation Army here, and I would just like to take this opportunity to thank all of the Board members and for your generosity in using the revenue-sharing dollars to help support the Salvation Army during our community Thanksgiving dinner. The monies that were raised for this year's event helped support over 1,100 meals to those who attended the dinner and to those that were shut-ins. We also had over 382 volunteers and over 1,630 volunteer hours. Once again, this shows how our community steps up and comes together to serve. Those numbers are up from last year in the volunteer situation here. I've only been here, it's my third year, it's my second holiday season, and it still amazes me that even though in our economical times, that, you know, the money has been down just a little bit as far as donations have been concerned, but the people that come out to give and to help and to serve has been tremendous over these years that I've been here. I also have to thank all participating Placer County employees and supervisors that have helped support this event for over the past 17 years. Together, you have raised over $83,000 and provided thousands of meals for those in our community. We understand that you can choose any social service program to help. We are also blessed to have you choose ours. As you have helped over the years, it has allowed us to provide more services to the community with food, shelter, utilities, and transportation. We look forward to your continued support, and I hope and pray that the partnership may go on for many years to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to close public comment and go to Supervisors Committee reports. Anybody have anything to report? Supervisor Holmes?
Yeah, this isn't a committee report, but I did want to share with the Board an article that's in today's San Francisco Chronicle. No, it's not about the 49ers. It's actually about California County's revamping bail policies. It says in the article, "Instead of basing a person's release slowly on their ability to pay a bail amount, some counties are allowing law enforcement authorities, often probation officers, to conduct pre-trial risk assessments." Last year, several years after deciding to go to a risk-based policy, Placer County officials released only 480 convicted criminals early, a nearly 90 percent drop. In that county, accused criminals cleared for release are not asked to post bail, but instead are supervised by probation officers as they await trial, the same way they would be if they were on probation. Placer County Chief Probation Officer Marshall Hopper said that having a pre-trial policy has helped both law enforcement and the accused. "There are conditions of release, and we can conduct home visits to allow structure and supervision when a case is pending in court," he said. "It gives judges another tool when they are making a release decision about who looks like a good candidate, keeping in mind that the number-one priority is public safety." "It's good for those charged with a crime," Hopper said, "because they can remain at home with their families and keep their jobs, and because it allows the accused to prove to the court that they are on the right track even before trial. On the flip side, if they perform poorly, we take them back to jail, and the court knows about it," he said. "We want to make sure we keep the people in jail that need to be there and keep people of lesser risk in the community under the right structure and supervision." So it's encouraging to see that Placer County gets some recognition for our chief probation officer and our probation officer office that has taken the lead on this issue. So anyhow, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, Supervisor Holmes. Supervisor Euler?
Yeah, two quick things. As your Board's representative on the Golden CR Job Training Agency, last spring, I reported to you that under the continuing resolution process, the majority in Congress had sought to zero out all funding for WEAP programs, Workforce Investment Act programs. This year, full funding has been restored for all WEAP. Never did get zeroed out, that was just in one of the continuing resolutions. So we do have a budget for our one-stops that are in both Placer County, El, well, yeah, Placer and Elrato County. Alpine County uses Elrato services and South Lake Tahoe. So there is funding, and those will continue. And then, as one of your two representatives on the Placer County Transportation Planning Agency, just wanted to report that at our meeting tomorrow morning, Supervisor Holmes and I, along with our other colleagues, will be briefed on the initial alternatives for reconstruction of the interchange of Interstate 80 and Highway 65. We received a briefing from staff yesterday on this. As folks know, PCTPA was the lead agency on breaking the Roseville bottleneck. We successfully, now we're able to move folks through, most of the way through Roseville, but we get to Highway 65, and there's a little bit of a hang-up from time to time. So we've turned our attention to the 65 interchange, and tomorrow morning at 9:00, we will be meeting here. We will be presented with five different alternatives that we are considering at this point, I think it was five.
Yes, actually seven, but five or bigger.
If anybody is interested in seeing what the transportation planning geniuses are up to in terms of how we're going to solve that problem, please feel free to attend tomorrow morning at 9:00 right here.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
It's important to remember that these are not alternatives. They're, at this point, they're concepts.
Excellent. And then I just have one brief committee report. I did attend last Friday the High CRRCND. There are a number of things that that body is doing that are relevant to the county of Placer, a hen, or actually a chicken processing, a poultry processing facility, some things related to our world-famous citrus. And so I'm going to actually ask that Board to come to us and give us a bit of a presentation sometime in the next few months, just give us an update on what they are doing with some of our dollars. So just as a heads up, we will be bringing that forward in the future. And that's it for me on committee reports. Anything else before I move on? Okay, seeing none. Now we are at the consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda have been recommended for approval by the County Executive Department. All items will be approved in a roll-call vote, and anyone may ask to address consent items prior to the Board taking action, and any item may be moved for discussion. Is there any clarification? Tom?
If I might, Madam Chairperson. Item number 13, we distributed a revised or amended report on that last evening or late in the day that has been distributed large. It's to delete two individuals off that recommendation who did not have the time and service on that. So you do have a copy of that amended staff report, and that is available to anybody who is so interested.
Okay. Supervisor Holmes, your light is on. All right, no other changes then? Anyone from the audience? Nothing. All right, we have a motion on this. Roll call.
Holmes?
Aye.
Wygant?
Yes.
Euler?
Montgomery.
Yes. All right, we now have the great pleasure to move to our 9:05 timed item, which Supervisor Wygant will be presenting. Robert, take it away.
Steve, if you'd come to the podium, please, so we have a good shot targeted of you. I'll come, I'm going to read this resolution from here, then I'll come on down, and you'll actually get a chance to have the microphone back, if you, so choose. So it'll be fairly nice. But it's been a great pleasure to be able to provide a resolution to Steve Nichols. I'm going to read that resolution, and it'll pretty much be self-explanatory. Whereas after graduating from UC Davis 34 years ago with a double engineering degree, Steve joined PG&E serving on the original team that developed PG&E's Energy Conservation Services. Whereas Steve was given the freedom to think outside the box and come up with plans to better service PG&E's customers, ultimately proposing to help customers use less of his company's product, this small idea paved the way for the industry-leading program that currently represents 1.3 billion in energy efficiency incentives for the 2010 through 2012 funding period. Little did everyone know his idea would be that far outside the box. And whereas all these many years later, Steve is still known for innovative thinking and making things happen. For the past four years, he has held positions of Northern California Director of Energy Solutions and Services. As such, he oversees a team of 125 account executives who cover territory from San Mateo in the south, to Eureka in the north, and to Donner Summit in the east. Whereas Steve drives an average of 2,000 miles a month supporting his PG&E team, attending countless corporate meetings while managing to be very involved in this local community. Steve has served on the Placer County Economic Development Board for 15 years, serving as Chair in 2010, playing an integral role in the Board's reorganization. Whereas Steve and his wife Karen have been married for 32 years, raising three wonderful children. Every year, he joins fellow enthusiasts on a 2,000-to-3,000-mile motorcycle ride to explore a new part of North America with destinations including the southwest Canada and everywhere in between. Whereas Steve recognizes the value of economic development, and his dedication has led to the attraction of several large companies in the region. And whereas Steve recognizes that economic development and his time on the Placer County Economic Development Board has been exceptionally gratifying. He has promoted the area and helped attract new businesses, and just as important, made it easier for existing companies to do business here. Therefore, on this 24th day of January 2012, the Placer County Board of Supervisors does hereby recognize and thank Steve for your 15 years of service to the county. Personally, in this business from time to time, we get to meet people through our professional relationships. Steve actually introduced himself to me when I first was elected to the Board back in 1995, and just offered to be available as it dealt with the relationship between the county and PG&E. And it was kind of an unusual experience in the sense that it was very popular back then for everybody to bash PG&E. So here I meet this guy who just makes himself available, expresses some of the concerns that his company has. But through that and over the years, we've actually, it's been a great pleasure to actually develop friendship, a personal friendship that I hold in very high regard, Steve. So we get to talk about things like fly fishing and motorcycle trips and just compare notes. In economic development, the entrepreneurialism that was identified in the resolution has just served us remarkably well. We went through this reorganization, and Steve was real key, not only supporting that, but thinking out of the box and coming up with some great solutions. So I was just actually commenting last night that when I grew up, Steve's the kind of person that I actually want to be like, but I, but right after I said that, I decided that, you know, I'm just not ready to grow up yet, Steve, so I'm going to leave the responsible stuff to you, but with that, it's a great pleasure to give this resolution.
You're really going to let me take the mic for a second?
Yeah, for a little while.
And you should, because I owe you a response that I haven't gotten to you, so first my apologies, but I'm working on it. I just want to say it's my honor to actually serve Placer County, and I've said this in many places over the years, but I love Placer County, and I live here. You know, if I have my say in things, I will live here for the rest of my life. And I've been able to do, you know, what's occurred so far with the backing and support of PG&E as a member of their officer and director team. It's been an honor to represent both PG&E and Placer County in a number of ways. So I appreciate the recognition. What I really appreciate is the opportunity to work with each of you. And, I mean, I've worked with Kirk a great deal, and Jennifer and I have shared the last year-plus on the Economic Development Committee. Jim and I have known each other for a long time and have worked closely together. And Robert, as you described, you know, a friendship is formed through, you know, really a business contact. So it is both my honor as a representative of PG&E, but we'll be honored, you know, throughout my life as an individual to find ways to serve Placer County. So you don't have to answer today, but my ask is that I'm not going away, and I'm going to keep coming asking what else I can do, and that's because I love this place, and I really respect what you do. And here people like Mr. Fisher this morning and Salvation Army, I mean, there's important work being done amongst all the fray of politics and media and all the things that are rough in the world sometimes. I have a great deal of respect for all of you, so thank you very much. Thank you, Steve.
I need to thank you personally. As many of you recall, we did have a break in the Bear River Canal some time ago, and Steve was really instrumental in helping rally the PG&E response, and that was above and beyond the call of duty for him, and I really wanted to personally thank you for that, because there were some obviously pretty severe ramifications that could have, could have come about from that. And through your efforts, I think PG&E really rallied, along with PCWA and the county and all the various entities, to take what could have been a really terrible, terrible situation and minimize the effects on that. So my thanks to you personally for that, so thank you. Okay, at this time, we will move on to our first departmental item. This is number three from the County Executive Office, redevelopment, and there are a number of actions we will be being asked to take here, and Allison Carlos is presenting. Allison?
Thank you. Good morning. Staff, Allison Carlos with County Executive Office, and staff is asking for a number of actions from your Board today to, first of all, to accept and acknowledge that you would be the successor agency, not only for the redevelopment agency, but also for the housing function that was previously under what we're going to call, for this presentation, the former redevelopment agency. With the dissolution effective February 1st, this would be the Board meeting where we would need to have that be accomplished. The other actions on your agenda, specifically the urgency ordinance amending Chapter 2 of county code, would establish a redevelopment department. There's an urgency ordinance for, to modify the uncodified allocations of positions through department's ordinance to effect that department staffing. Also, we're asking you to approve an employee contract for the position of the Director of the Department of Redevelopment. We're also asking for you to approve a budget for that department. The actions would all enable us to move forward effectively February 1st through the urgency actions. As a successor agency, which your Board would be opting into, or you actually will become the successor agency, but the duties would include, you would continue to make payments for those obligations that were the redevelopment obligations under the enforceable obligations payment schedule. You would continue to keep reserves, maintain the reserves of the county, not take on any new projects per se, and to liquidate property, to manage the loans, and also to wind down all projects. If the county were not to become the successor agency, effectively, what would happen is the first taxing entity that would present a resolution to our county auditor, controller, requesting to be that successor agency, would become the successor agency. What that would mean is that a entity outside of Placer County would then have control of these assets and the wind-down processing. Also, if the housing portion was not taken on by your Board as the successor agency, then in fact, a housing authority or the California HUD Housing and Urban Development Department would take over those responsibilities. So in order to conduct the work of your successor agency status, the Department of Redevelopment is, we're asking for that to be created today under those actions I mentioned. What would, this department would be is a transitional department as the whole purpose for it is for conducting the wind-down activities. It would not be for the purposes of what redevelopment agency has been prior, which is often new work, new projects, and so forth. This is very intended for wind-down. We anticipate that need would be for about a year or two. The staff from the existing redevelopment agency, come February 1st, would be transferred into the redevelopment department, and thereafter, as the workload would indicate, we would be measuring and monitoring that staffing need. Also, what would be required is some leadership within that department, and we are asking for that employee contract for the redevelopment department director. We thought that the employee contract concept was very consistent with having a temporary department of short-term duration. The budget that we're asking you to approve for $10,350,000 approximately would be, a five-month budget, would take us through to the end of this fiscal year. The department will have to submit another budget, just like any other department, and go through the proposed budget process for the fiscal year 2012, 13. Included in the budget are all projected revenues, expenditures, and the indebtedness, the payments of indebtedness for the five months. I would like to speak for a minute about the Oversight Board. The Oversight Board is going to need to be constructed. I would like to make a correction to the staff report. The Oversight Board does not contain two of appointees of the superintendent of schools, that's only one, as well as a mayor, of which we're still trying to resolve how that would happen or be selected. So the successor agency must be in place on May 1st. And to be clear, the successor agency does have supervisory and oversight function for the operations and workings of the successor agency. So the actions this point forward, come February 1st, there is that oversight, as well as the Director of Finance from the State of California can poke their nose under the tent at any given point in time. In terms of the wind-down activities, there's three core areas that are part of that, property, loans, and projects. The redevelopment, former redevelopment agency had 17 million in properties. The concept would be for liquidation of those properties and transfer. The legislation currently does not provide for any special consideration of maintenance of those properties by the successor agency, nor doesn't make any special provision for first right of refusal for purchase. We may see something come up in the future to provide guidance or correction to that. The loans, the management of the Housing and Capital Projects Loans Program would continue to be a function of the department. Ultimately, as your staff report reflects, a subsequent action we would come back with your Board with is for consideration of the housing portion of what was a former RDA to be placed within the Community Development Resource Agency. Those functions are determined to be very consistent with the activities of that department. In terms of the projects, the former redevelopment agency continually sought out prior to the Disillusion Act being enacted, projects that were important to the county and important to your Board. The enforceable obligations payment schedule is currently driving the payment and the movement of projects that you have, that you have approved, and I don't want to overstate that. The enforcement obligation schedule doesn't dictate to you what payment schedule should be, but currently, those things on the list that you last approved and effective through December 31st of 2011 clearly allowed you to continue with certain projects. Attached to my F in your staff report has a list of what has traditionally been the former redevelopment projects list. The top section did include some of those projects that were in the enforceable obligations payment schedule, and an item that the RDA will bring to you today will amend that list. The idea is, is currently, staff believes that those enforceable obligation payment schedule items are funded through bond covenants and contracts, so we would assume that would proceed as on that course. Our first task of the successor agency will be to prepare by March 1st what is the recognized obligation schedule, which is you recognizing that there's an enforceable obligations payment schedule. The auditor controller has a material role in all of this. It's by statute, and if Kathy or Andy would like to speak to that in detail, I think they're here today, the staff would say we would come back and make presentation in the next weeks over the role and the workload for the auditor's office. At this point in time, through the end of this fiscal year, staff is not identifying a significant fiscal, adverse fiscal impact from your actions to become the successor agency in general and for housing. However, over time, we're going to continue to come back to you as things may change in that regard. We just don't know at this point in time. There's just insufficient information as we're looking at not only the assets but liability, the liabilities that currently the auditor controller is reconciling. So there is a big work effort there. In terms of these internal service funds, limited impact from the redevelopment agent being dissolved, because the redevelopment department will still need certain internal services, so that's a limited impact. Next steps, again, towards the end of February, early March, what we believe is we'll be coming back to talk about the auditor controller office impacts, anything that may be occurring legislatively around this, identifying any, the recognized obligations payment schedule listing, and to ask you to designate your Oversight Board members. I think you would have a total of three. And with that, I will conclude my comments, and we have And with that, I will conclude my comments, and we have current redevelopment agency staff here, Ray James, Cindy Kelly, as well as Deputy County Counsel Karen Schwab, and our Auditor Controller's Office, Kathy Martinez and Andy Sisk.
Are there any questions by any members of the board for Allison at this point? Okay, seeing none. Ray or Kathy or anyone, is there anything you wanted to add to the discussion today? Okay. One comment that I, I did want to make on this is I have been having some preliminary discussions with Allison, Jennifer Merchant, and I mentioned this to Holly as well, that some of the real property that we actually hold up in the Tahoe area, I think there are some pretty significant implications to the county moving forward with our water quality permit up there through La Honton and our requirement to meet TMDL as relates to some of those actual physical properties, particularly some of the parking lots that we've done where we've remediated properties and put in BMPs that did not exist. And so, unless there is some opposition from, from the board that I hear today, I would propose that I work with Allison and Jennifer and probably Holly to look at what opportunities exist legislatively moving forward that we not have to liquidate some of those assets that were very clearly related to environmental improvement projects that we were mandated to do by either TRPA or state or federal water law. So do I, do I hear any concerns from any of the board with that? Supervisor Holmes?
I have no concern about that. I just wanted to make a comment.
Please.
First of all, Allison, I want to thank you and Holly for spending time with me yesterday so I can fully understand what's going on here. I appreciate the staff report, and I'm honored that Ray James will be the Development Director, or the Successor Agency Director. She comes with a lot of knowledge and professionalism, and so we are pleased to have you onboard. Thank you.
Tom?
I just want to mention that the office will support all those activities. We do that as a routine basis. There is, and I think Allison kind of alluded to this, that at some point, those properties, should the county want to retain those, end up being at a county cost, general fund cost. So we'll be exploring that and reporting it back to the board as one of those options. And if it takes an adjustment in the legislative platform to support these kind of activities, those will be brought back to the full board.
Thank you. Yeah, and, and I'm hoping the ask that we can make to our state legislators is that we don't actually have to buy our own properties back from ourselves, but because of the relation to our permitting for water quality and the rules relating to Lake Tahoe specifically, that we get some sort of exemption, for lack of a better term. Tony?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment. This is an extraordinarily complex series of items, and staff should be congratulated. They've worked very diligently, very hard, under very short time. I realize the litigation delayed the implementation of this, but the original deadlines that we're now following were in the legislation. And essentially, the State of California needed some money and crashed redevelopment into a wall, the still spare parts. And local government is now have to deal with what's left of redevelopment and the crash victims. And it's hard. And what you alluded to, there's going to be dozens, if not hundreds, of these kind of questions. And, you know, this could have been done on a year or a two-year basis, could have been stretched out, and logically unwinding redevelopment. And, you know, philosophically, whether you like it or don't like it, you don't do it in three weeks or three months. It's just a very complex thing that's part, and I think staff has done a great job in probably shouldn't have said my two cents, but this is not easy, what they've asked us to do, and, and I think they've done a great job getting it done.
And I will second that. Thank you. I know that was an emotion, but I'm going to second that because the, the complexity of this is really overwhelming, and it's not just for us here at the county. I have heard over and over again, as I'm sure many of the supervisors have from special districts, saying, "What are the implications for me? What does this mean?" That's an ongoing question that we are truly trying to refine and, and over time, and working with the Auditor's Office, we will, we will get to those answers. But at this point, I will be looking for an action to implement the February 1, 2012 dissolution of the Placer County Redevelopment Agency. Tony, did you want these taken individually or as a whole?
Madam Chair? I don't think we've had public comment on this.
Oh, you are quite correct. Thank you so much. Any public comments on this? Anyone like to address the board?
Good morning, Board. I'm Sandy Evans Hall with the North Lake Tahoe Resort Association. And as it impacts Lake Tahoe, I think, as you realize, and Jennifer, you mentioned, we have a very unique circumstance in that we've got a lot of environmental regulations that we have to do there that don't exist elsewhere. And we've used the redevelopment dollars pretty extensively in doing brownfield cleanup, in doing streetscapes, in doing parking lot development, all of those things which are very important to us being able to maintain the lake clarity. And we really don't know how we're going to be able to do this if, as we move forward. So as we consider into the future, I would really like you to support some legislative action to be able to allow us to lobby for some type of organization or some kind of a statutory district that would allow us to use tax increment financing for infrastructure development as it meets lake quality, you know, goals that we have. The other piece that I think is important to remember, and it's a very small dollar amount, and I hope that you'll find a resolution for this, but our downtown organizations have been funded through redevelopment in the amount of about $60,000 a year each, and this is about a third of their budget. It's something that they really need to be able to, to move forward and continue to operate. And they're doing a lot of really good work with the events and the things that, that create vitality in both the Kings Beach area and North Tahoe area, as well as the Tahoe City area. And I'd like to see them be able to continue to operate. And then I think, you know, the other thing that we look at is, you know, the built infrastructure in the Tahoe area is really one of our number-one goals in terms of our organization, and you keep looking at why isn't the private sector doing this? We got some figures from one of the local developers that said it really costs about $130,000 per key to develop a, a hotel property or some kind of a condominium property in the Sacramento area. That cost in Tahoe is around $220,000 to $280,000. That's significant, and I would, I would have to say to you that we're not able to charge double for a room in Tahoe than what we can in other areas. I wish we could, but we can't. So it's really important that we have some kind of an agency or somebody that is able to come in and kind of underlie some of the private investment dollars that are able to happen in our area. And this can happen through, again, some kind of a statutory organization or funded entity that is able to take on some of the regulatory environment that we have to do that makes it a little bit unique and different to try and redevelop up there. So thank you.
Thank you, Sandy. Anyone else from the public like to comment on this? Any final staff comments? Okay, seeing none. Do we have a motion? Kirk, your light is on.
Yeah. Just move approval of Item 3A, 1 through 5, all-inclusive.
All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? None. Motion carries. Thank you.
We now move on to Item B, redevelopment. Adopting a resolution declaring the County of Placer has not forgiven any loans advances or indebtedness owed to it by the Placer County Redevelopment Agency during the period January 1, 2010 through December 31, 2011. Once again, Allison Carlos.
Yes, thank you very much. Very simple matter. That action, as you just read it, it's a pretty ministerial action. Basically, we'd ask your, your board to, to approve and adopt that we are in compliance and that we have not taken on any new debt and loans, and it's pretty much that simple. The new law does require that we go through this process, as well as you have an item on your agenda as the redevelopment board to do the same.
Thank you. Any comments from the board, questions? Anyone in the audience care to comment or question on this? Seeing none, do we have a motion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. We move on to 3C, fiscal year 2012-13 proposed state budget. We're getting an update from the always entertaining Graham Canous.
Good morning. Graham Canous, your Finance and Budget Operations Manager. I am here before you this morning to provide a brief update related to the state budget, talk about some of the implications related to the county. And I'll start with the bottom line, which is that, that what, what the impacts related to the county this year are a vast improvement over the risks, the significant risks and policy changes that we talked about just a year ago in January related to 1112 budget. However, having said that, there are certainly both policy and fiscal implications to the county and a number of things that are, that create some uncertainty as we move through the year and try to respond to whatever the state budget impacts may ultimately be. The state budget this year, of course, still has a deficit. It's, we're now at $9.2 billion, which includes $4.1 billion in the current year and a $5.1 billion shortfall in 2012-13. The approach to solve that problem relies heavily on a November 2012 tax initiative that the governor is, is pursuing outside of the legislature and a number of cuts, which I'll chat about in just a second. That tax increase would be a half-cent sales tax increase over the course of four years and a five-year personal income tax increase that's graduated for incomes, for taxable income over $250,000 for individuals. On the whole, those tax proposals would, are estimated to provide $6.9 billion in, in revenue, of which $2.5 billion would immediately go to schools, and the remainder would be used to balance the budget and make some inroads related to what the, the state has referred to as their wall of debt, their $33 billion in outstanding borrowing. Other solutions include suspending or, in a number of cases, repealing mandates for savings of $830 million, and that's a really big number, although most of the mandates that impact the county have already been suspended for the past few years, with the exception of a couple in, in the law enforcement area. There are also payment deferrals, which we've experienced for each of the last three years. Nothing different here, addresses the state cash flow issues, and in fact, actually, they'll probably be a little bit smaller than they've been over the past few years, given the implications of the realignment. Major other solutions include significant Cal Works and childcare, both policy changes and, and reductions totaling about $1.4 billion. Policy and fiscal changes related to the Medi-Cal program, that total $850 million. We have in-home supportive services reductions, which have been on the table for each of the last several years. A number of those proposals have actually been approved by the legislature, although not one, most of them have not gone into, into effect, given multiple court injunctions. There are certainly education-related impacts in the budget, so I won't go into those. A billion and a half in fees and borrowing-related, related items as well. Similar to what we've experienced in 2011-12, there are some mid-year trigger cuts that are proposed, $5.4 billion, to the extent that the November tax initiative does not ultimately be, one, put on the ballot, and, second, approved by the voters. Nearly all of the impacts of those mid-year cuts would occur to education, although there are some impacts to courts and to Cal Fire, which could have implications to the county. I want to spend just a moment to talk about realignment. We've had, your board's had a number of conversations about realignment, particularly the public safety portion of that over the course of this past year. And flashing back to the summer of 2011, when the realignment was finalized with the, with the state budget, that was a one-year temporary structure that was put in place for the $6 billion in programs that were realigned. What's in the January budget takes, takes that one-year structure and converts it into what would permanently be in place. That's intended to address some of the questions that are out there, and a lot of the, a lot of the details in terms of how you divvy up the dollars, what do you do if there's insufficient revenue to, to pay for the costs? How do you distribute revenue to the extent that it's above and beyond what was needed to fund the base? So it addresses a number of questions included in that. Also provides a $200 million augmentation to child welfare services, and that's an area that's been impacted over the past few years with, with some reductions. And the concept of a reserve, which we, we do locally in our budget here, but often doesn't happen when we talk about programs that are realigned from the state to counties. So the concept is to have some sort of a reserve approach such that, to the extent we're five years down the line and there's insufficient revenue, at least there's some mechanism to make up for a shortfall. Finally, there are constitutional protections that, that you're aware of related to, related to the realignment. They're linked to the governor's tax initiative at this point, and those would lock in what the funding structure would be and provide some other protections to us. Specific county impacts that are relevant include a number of things that we've talked about here before relative to probation. If you recall, one of the mid-year trigger cuts this year was to charge counties $125,000 per juvenile ward house with the state. The January budget proposal suspends that for a year, so would not collect that, the $250,000 impact to us, and would augment funding related to juvenile justice by $10 million in the current year, intended to be planning dollars for the realignment of those remaining juvenile offenders from the state to the counties. Exactly how that will work is unclear. There are many, many details and issues of capacity and how we would integrate those folks or manage them at a local level. And so that is probably the most significant realignment and straight fiscal budget impact relative to the county. In the Sheriff's area, I mentioned some mandates that were, mandates being suspended or repeal, repealed. There are some law enforcement mandates that previously have continued to be funded and are now proposed to be suspended for 2012-13 at a cost of somewhere in the $110,000 range to our Sheriff's Department. In the HHS area, there are a multitude of significant policy changes impacting the Cal Works program, Medi-Cal, in-home supportive services, excuse me, services, as I mentioned. Most of those are direct impacts to the clients that the HHS department serves, but there is about a half a million dollars in operational support that is also at risk in the, in the There are other challenges from a local perspective. There are other, other challenges that we have talked about, and we will continue to do so as we work through our local budget. Timing and demands related to the South Placer Adult Detention Facility, the interoperable radio project and working through that from a, from a funding perspective, AV 109 funding and responsibilities. Certainly, department budget needs that will emerge over the course of the next couple of weeks as we get those budgets back in. And we will be returning to your board in late February related to what's, what's included in those local impacts, an update relative to what's happening in our overall budget. So we, so we will be back. And as we do so, we will be continuing to refine what the implications of the state budget may be on us and adapting to whatever proposals may, may be out there. One final note is just that there's a, there's an outside player in all of this related to the state budget and county implications, which is the initiative process, which at the moment, there are 81 initiatives currently pending, and of those, 16 directly impact the budget, and another eight are purely focused on pension reform. Now, most of those are ultimately never going to make it to the ballot, but some of those, some of those will, and it could be the, either creating a solution of some sort or making the, making the problem even larger, depending upon, depending upon, you know, ultimately what gets on the ballot. So it's a, it's a new, a newer dynamic in terms of the quantity of initiatives that are out there, and that there's a whole ballgame that's now occurring at the state level that's about not going through the legislature and figuring out some of the way to get it, to get things done. And this year, we may find that there are some implications to that as we work through our local budget process. And with that, I will open up for any questions that folks may have. process. And with that, I will open up for any questions that folks may have.
Any questions from the board? Seeing none. Any questions from the audience? Seeing none. Graham, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. At this point, we will move on to item 3D, ballot measure transient occupancy tax, relating to the transient occupancy tax in the North Lake Tahoe area, presented by Jennifer Merchant. Jennifer, thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Jennifer with the County Executive Office. The item before you for consideration today is a recommendation to approve a resolution and proposed ballot language for placement of a county measure on the June 5 statewide presidential election, excuse me, statewide primary presidential election. The measure would reauthorize the existing 2% additional transient occupancy tax currently collected in the North Lake Tahoe area. Voters in eastern Placer County initially approved this increase in TOT from 8% to 10% in 1996. There was one subsequent 10-year approval during that period, which is in place today. If approved for a third time, the 2% tax would be renewed effective October 30, excuse me, October 1, 2012, and sunsetting September 30, 2022. The 2% tax is a general tax, and as such, is allocated at the Board of Supervisors' discretion. Historically, the funds have been allocated by your board to implement the North Lake Tahoe Tourism Development Master Plan, including projects and programs that promote tourism and the economic welfare of the North Lake Tahoe area. To date, roughly $20 million in Tahoe TOT funds from this 2% increment have been collected and allocated to visitor-serving capital projects in the North Lake Tahoe area, leveraging another $164 million in local, state, and federal funding. Projects either constructed or underway include the Kings Beach Commercial Core Project, Tahoe City Sidewalk Project, several miles of multipurpose trails, public access acquisitions and improvements, wayfinding and welcome signage, and museums. Another $7 million has been allocated since 2005 for transportation program and transit operational improvements. A survey completed under the direction of the Resort Association and other local government and private business interests of likely voters demonstrated significant support for the reauthorization. Formation of a campaign committee for the purposes of supporting the measure, including small and large lodging and other business representatives, is currently underway. And I believe the Resort Association does have some staff here to answer questions, and I'm also available to answer questions, should you have any. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Jennifer? All right. Sandy, did you have anything you wanted to present, or, I'm sorry, Ron, please come forward?
Hi, I'm Ron Trevis with the North Lake Tahoe Resort Association. And the, Jennifer made a very thorough presentation of, of what the need is, and what I wanted to assure you, which is always our role in advising, being able to provide advice to the Board of Supervisors, is that, once again, we have taken a very thorough community approach to this, to where we had a, have had a real solid committee to put together the suggested language and the determining the continued want and need of this existing 2% for another 10 years. Then with the staff of Jennifer Merchant and Holly and Farin Call and Jerry Carden, we have put together a very solid package that we took to the voters in a voter survey last summer, and actually had a professional firm do 350 voter interviews of testing, just different, what do you want to be done with this money, what has been done that you like, what amounts of money would you warm up to putting back into this. And, and the voter survey, in three different sections of it, asked the same question, which included this ballot language, for the most part, that's before you know. And the first time that it was asked, early in the survey, it received a 55%, for sure I'll vote for it, and another 30%, 30% on top of that, giving a, an 85%, much more likely to vote for it than not. As that survey went on, we then presented additional information, such as what this has done and hasn't, and that rose up to a, a 90% and a 61%. Then we even came in with a third section, saying, here's some of the potential, if we could come up with them, points that an opposition movement might bring forward in a campaign. And it was some pretty ugly stuff that we put forward that could happen, you know, in wildest dreams. And the, the final percentage dropped down to 60% definitely would vote for it, and 86% more than likely would vote for this. So we feel real comfortable in that we have a, a good, a good ballot that we're bringing forward, that will be paid by the visitors to the area for facilities and services that will make the visitor experience better, and not by the local, local taxpayers. Again, even in the survey, though, the local taxpayers did recognize the economic situation we're in, and did say that we should increase the existing 2% and not be going any higher, because it would affect the, the visitors that did come to the areas. So there was some concern for that. So we appreciate your consideration and accepting of this, and look forward to being able to continue in our role as advisors to you in how to improve the economic and environmental situation at North Lake Tahoe. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. And just to be clear, so, so I'm clear, and anyone who's listening is clear, this will require a four-fifths vote by our board, but it is a simple majority when it goes to the taxpayers, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else from the audience like to comment on this item? Please come forward.
Dave Ferrari from Kings Beach. I didn't really come here today. I came to hear the redevelopment discussion, but since this is on the agenda, I will say that our family reluctantly supported this back in 1996, when the 2% was added to it. I think for, for being in the business, there's a couple costs that come to us. You know, one is that most people are going to pay it on a credit card, and we have to, you know, take the time to pay it back to, to Placer County. And, and people are savvy, guests are savvy these days, and they often ask, well, what's the tax? And I think, so when they're looking at a, at a room rate, they look at the total rate, and that's how they make their decision. Of course, everybody's, you know, paying the 10, but I think, so it does affect lodging, but I, but I think 10% is relatively, it's actually very low by the standards today in the, in the industry. And I, we, we can see the changes that have been made with the 2%. I think it's been used very well, and a lot of it has been. I mean, also used in the Tahoe Basin. So I, we will be strong supporters of, you know, continuing on with the 10%. And, and I also would just like to quickly comment that I know you, as a county, have had to take a lot of austerity measures to, you know, save money in these tough times. But the, your, your decision to not send any snow to Lake Tahoe this year, I don't think is paying off for you in the long run. So we've still got a little time left, and, you know, maybe you can get it on a special agenda. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Ferrari. But if the snow is not getting to Lake Tahoe, it must be stopping at my house, because I have about three new feet of snow in my front yard. So we are getting some snow, for anyone who's listening. Come ski, come snowboard. Anyone else from the audience want to comment on this? Anything from the board? Do I have a motion?
And then, under discussion, if I may?
Yes, please.
This is one of those, one of those rare taxes that businesspeople and, and community leaders, who typically are standing here in front of us, asking us not to impose additional fees and taxes, will then turn around and support. And whereas in certain jurisdictions, we see TOT dollars being used to fill gaping holes in budgets that are caused by something completely unrelated to the service demands of travelers. And whereas in certain jurisdictions, I, I think of the District of Columbia, where their TOT tax, last time I was there, I believe, was either 12 or 15%. And you, you, if you're traveling to the district, typically, well, many times, it's not by choice. You're there because you have to be. You have some kind of business you have to conduct, and therefore, you have to pay the tax if you want to stay anywhere in the region. Conversely, in Tahoe, we see the TOT used very effectively to actually improve, enhance the visitor experience. I can't say that's the same in the District of Columbia. I don't recall the last time I felt warm and fuzzy about that my TOT dollars are actually going to improve my visitor experience there. The Tahoe community, I think, is to be commended for how aggressively they have worked with the Resort Association to identify priorities that meet the needs of businesses, of travelers, and of the local community. And many times, there is wonderful overlap in those projects that enhance the North Tahoe area for travelers, as well as for residents. And, and as Mr. Ferrari pointed out, travelers are savvy. And, and nobody is more sensitive to that, that fine line that you might fall over, trip and fall over, should you tack on too much by way of these additional fees, than those people who live in a resort destination, who, who recognize that they are in competition. Folks don't have to go to Tahoe and spend their recreation dollars. They can go elsewhere. So I appreciate the Resort Association, the business community up there, and the residents up there, for making sure that these dollars that are collected through TOT are spent on things that truly enhance the value of the lake and the visitor experience at the lake. Want to thank the Resort Association for their continued stewardship on this issue, and look forward to working with you as we move forward, even more projects that enhance that experience.
Thank you, Supervisor Yular. And I'd like to echo those comments. I really want to thank the CEO's office, the North Lake Tahoe Resort Association, Dave Ferrari, and the, the business community up there, and frankly, the larger community of ratepayers and voters who have, twice in the past, supported this. I, I think it's a, really a wonderful benefit for the lake, and frankly, it's a benefit to all of us at the county. So my thanks and my deepest appreciation to all of you. We do have a motion and a second on the table. Any more discussion before we move on this? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry. Is this a roll call? This is a roll call.
Holmes?
Aye.
Mike Gant?
Yular?
Montgomery?
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you. At this time, we will move on to our 10:00 AM timed item. Jerry Gamaz, Nicole Howard, and I believe Val Flood presenting on this. I don't know who wants to start here.
Valerie Flood from Placer County Council's Office, representing the Administrative Services Department in this TOT appeal brought by Falcon Lodge Principals, Mr. and Mrs. Hodgson. I spoke with Mr. Hodgson a number of times yesterday. He has requested that this matter be continued because of his ability, because of road conditions and his ability to make it here today. I spoke with Jerry Gamaz yesterday, and we agreed that we would bring his request for continuation to the board, and that we would recommend that the board grant that continuation. We also kept CEO Chairman Anthony LaBeuf in the loop on that.
Tom, did you have a comment on that?
Yes, I, just that based on that correspondence of yesterday, indicated something about February 28th was desired. But I do want to point out to the board, your next meeting on the 14th, you only have four, your five members present. On the 28th, there's a number of continued items already for that, Bell Gardens Apartment Relocation Plan, Granite Bay Community Plan, and a public hearing on Sierra Sun Villages. And you will also be hearing about Hurst's retirement options, and maybe something on the county's budget. There was some concerns about continuance to the next Tahoe meeting, but your board may want to consider that as a viable option, simply because I don't think anybody can, maybe Dave can, predict whether or not we'll have snow at the next board meetings. But I think the sun's shining out there, and I understand the two folks who came over from Tahoe had no problem with this kind of weather. And so the next viable date for somebody to show up from Tahoe might be actually April, without question. And looking at your 28th meeting, it's very busy, and Regional Sura comes back on March 13th. Not a whole lot of window between here and then for your hearing, if it's going to take any amount of time.
Supervisor Holmes?
I, I just wondered, was road conditions, or was there something wrong with his car?
It was road conditions, concern about road conditions.
And what, what's wrong with the road? I see everybody made it here. I have.
And I don't doubt the truth of that.
On, this is in the 5th District. I'm certainly willing to continue this to a future date, if indeed that is the, the will of the rest of the board. I agree with the CEO Miller that I don't think the 28th is possible. I don't think the 13th is possible. So that would put us at the earliest, if we were to hear it here in Auburn, at the end of March. Jerry, Val, do you have any concerns with delaying this until we next meet in Tahoe?
Not necessarily. On one hand, it's nice to get things done. On the other hand, to the extent that the appeal is upheld, interest and penalties continue to accrue, so there's no real prejudice to the county in that regard. The continuance was made at the request of the taxpayer, and I've double-checked with Jerry, Mike Calendar, and Nicole Howard, who's my only witness, and we are all available for any of those meetings between February 28th and the Tahoe meeting in April. So it's whatever the board would like to do.
And does Mr. Hodgson understand that if the board does delay this today, it continues to, those, those interest and penalties continue to accrue?
Yes, he does. I told him that.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Holmes?
I have no problem moving forward. I have staff here. There's certainly no problem with the road conditions. The only question would be, if we did move forward, would that give Mr. Hodgson's cause for a lawsuit for not having his day in court?
Tony, Mr. LaBeuf?
So administratively failing to attend the hearing would be a deficiency in any argument that he would make before the courts. Unfortunately, he'd also make what might be a very sympathetic argument. I only asked for one continuance, and it was denied. And in my business, a, a single continuance is not usually considered unusual. And so, I can't predict what a court would say. I think administratively, he would not have exhausted his remedies properly, but I think a court might find it somewhat arbitrary not to grant somebody a single request for a continuance. How, and typically, we will not look too much beyond the request to see how genuine the request was. Yesterday was snowing. He was worried. I take it Matt is worried that he's an elderly man, wasn't sure about what was going to happen today. And I would encourage the board to unfortunately continue the matter, knowing that it may not really be well-motivated, but nevertheless, practically, it's the best thing for us to do.
Okay. Supervisor Yular, your light's on.
Yeah, just like to make a motion. We continue the item to our Tahoe Board meeting.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Does that require a time cert for Tahoe for the continuance, or who knows?
You know, at this point, it's far enough out that I think, and it's, the only person who's relevant is the appellant and his wife, and we'll be in direct communication with them. We'll set a time that works best for the board's schedule in Tahoe, either on the Monday or the Tuesday. And as we get close to that schedule, I think we're just picking now, something will, will be fixed at a time that we wouldn't necessarily be convenient for other purposes.
Thank you. All right then. We will move to item four, under Departmental Items. County Executive Office Emergency Services were being asked to approve a resolution and introduction of an ordinance ordering that a special tax measure for fire protection, emergency medical and prevention services, and equipment replacement within the North Auburn Ofor Fire Area be submitted to the voters at the primary election on June 5, 2012. Rui Cunha presenting, and Chief Brett Harris, County Fire Warden.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. As you mentioned, the item before you is asking that your board approve a resolution and adopt an ordinance ordering a special tax measure for fire protection services and equipment replacement in the North Auburn Ofor Fire Area. Additionally, the, the item is to be placed on the June 5 primary election. Additionally, the item is to be placed on the June 5 primary election. And lastly, if approved by the voters, this item would ask that the voters also approve an annual increase according to a pre-designated cost of living adjuster. As you know, I briefed your board on December 13th in relation to the fiscal situation in North Auburn Ofor Fire. At that time, your board directed me to come back on this date with all of the necessary staff actions related to allowing the community to decide its future as it related to fire service within North Auburn Ofor Fire. That's ultimately what is before you at this time. I do want to take a couple of seconds, if the board will indulge me, just thanking all of the great work that I've had from the County Council's office, the Clerk Recorder Elections Office, CEO staff, Cedra staff, LAFCO, and Cal Fire as it leads up to this. This isn't something that we do very often. It's been quite some time since the county's been involved in putting together an action such as this. So, I did want to at least mention all of the work that had been done behind it. Coming out of the study effort for North Auburn Ofor Fire, there were really two primary items that I think need to be reiterated as it relates to this specific action. One of them is that the study indicated that there was a pretty significant disparity in terms of the funding that comes forward from commercial industrial properties, comparing that to residential properties, and considering in both cases, the demand for service that is in fact available to both commercial industrial properties as well as residential properties and what they're using. This initiative that is before you now is intended to correct that disparity. The disparity that is listed in the study and fairly well detailed indicates that there's about a five to one disparity in what's paid for versus what is demanded. And this initiative is intended to correct that. And I think that's part of what the community is deciding on June 5. I think part of what the community is deciding is do they want to correct that disparity in funding as it comes forward? The second thing that comes out very, very clearly in the study is the fact that today as we speak, North Auburn Ofor Fire with its depth of resources can handle about 84% of the calls that it receives out of their 2,400 calls. It means 16% of their calls are serviced by outside agencies. Any service reduction option, as we take a look at North Auburn Ofor Fire, any service reduction that we do will reduce one additional engine company from North Auburn Ofor Fire. And there's no getting out of that. We run two firefighters on each of our engine companies. Any reduction will cause us to go from three engine companies to two. That lack or that reduced depth of service will in fact impact the numbers of calls that we are able to receive. And more importantly, that we're able to service and the time that it will take to service those calls. As a result of that, the community will be again most impacted by that reduced depth of service and the extended time that it takes to address any calls that come in. So, again, I think it's most appropriate that the community understand that, and certainly that is our task as we move forward. But then additionally, that the community get to decide that in fact that is what they want. The impacts to them will be very significant, and so ultimately, they'll need to decide whether or not those are impacts that they want to incur. The tax resolution and MAP provides Placer County Elections the materials that they need to move forward with this special tax measure on June 5. It is necessary to ask the registered voters of the North Auburn Ofor Fire area to make a decision as to what its service is going to be. The measure asks that residential units will pay $40 per unit moving forward in addition to the $48 as an example that they pay today. It will, the measure also asks that mobile homes and mobile home parks pay an additional $20 per unit in addition to the $24 that they pay today. And for commercial industrial properties, this measure asks that commercial industrial properties pay 4.6 cents per square foot above and beyond the $300 amount that they're capped at today. So, that's really what the measure asks for. This measure does accomplish two things. It sustains service in the North Auburn Ofor Fire area and two, it corrects the disparity that currently exists between commercial industrial properties and residential properties. Subject, any questions that you might have? Chief Harris is here to answer anything on the operational side, and I can certainly answer related to this issue.
Any questions from the board? Supervisor Holmes, go ahead. Chief Harris, was there anything you wanted to add to this?
Well, first of all, as a very fiscal conservative person, it's difficult for me to bring this measure forward. But we're at that point. We've cut everything we can cut. Now, we're down to reducing service, and I think it's appropriate that we bring this measure before the voters and let them choose what level of service they wish to have provided to their community. I'm sure as we go through the election process, there's going to be a good deal of rhetoric on both sides. But when you cut through the rhetoric, it's a very simple question. What level of service are we going to provide for North Auburn Ofor Fire? And how are we going to fund it? If we don't receive additional funding, we have to cut. There's nothing else left for us to do. An engine company has got to be cut from our mix that we throw into there, which is going to greatly affect the service that we provide to our citizens. But it's important that we bring this before the citizens and let them choose.
Thank you. Supervisor Holmes?
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, this issue isn't, just isn't North Auburn or Ofor. It's all the fire districts throughout the state are having the same issues. It's not because of mismanagement. It's not because of malfeasance. It's the way the system's set up to collect revenues, which is set by law. And most fire districts were formed in the last half of the, the first half of the last century. And the volunteers got together and formed fire districts. They went out to the communities. They agreed to tax themselves in order to provide fire safety. And that was fine. Volunteers came forward. It was great camaraderie and everything. Everything was fine until Proposition 13 hit, and that froze the property taxes. So, there's disparity between fire districts. I think the Loomis Fire Protection District had a little over two cents on the dollar. Some fire districts had as much as 12 cents on the dollar. And so, it's ironic or interesting that one fire district has about, you know, two cents on the dollar and the neighboring fire district might have seven cents on the dollar. So, it's an ongoing problem that we've had over the years. The North Auburn Ofor Fire District was merged, was Placer Consolidated at one time, and that was because the Ofor Fire District was again formed in the first half of the last century, and the Rock Creek Fire District was formed in the first half of the last century. But over the years, Ofor could see that they couldn't be self-sustaining, so they merged with Rock Creek, forming the Placer Consolidated Fire District. As I said on that Placer Consolidated Board, again, we could see the same thing happening. The revenues were not keeping up with its expenses. Why? Because energy costs go up, gasoline, diesel goes up, but more importantly, insurance costs go up. So, we have volunteers, but we have to provide insurance service for them. They need training. They need at least two years of training in order to even volunteer. Who wants to spend that much time making the effort to volunteer for a job that'll probably pay minimum wage? And so, again, it's something that's ongoing. We need to move forward on this. Just this morning, I was talking to an older gentleman that had an issue in Ofor where his wife had symptoms of a stroke early in the morning. He was grateful that the Ofor station responded within eight minutes. If this partial tax or benefit doesn't pass, the Ofor station more than likely will be round out. It'll be closed in the evening. What would that man have done? So, anyhow, it's important that we move forward on this. I want to work with the other fire districts because they're thinking about going forward. You know, Newcastle is having an issue. We're going to go for a special tax. In Newcastle, I know Penrith's thinking about it. I see Placer Hills here and South Placer, they're also thinking about it. It's an issue that is permeates throughout the state. We need to find a solution to be able to increase the level of fire protection service without always having to go back to the residents and asking them for more money because it'll happen again. It'll happen in another 10 or 15 years. We'll have to go back and ask for another increase. So, I will hardly support this effort going forward. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. I wanted to, I don't see any other lights lit up here, so I'm just going to ask for a little bit of a clarification. One of the things you mentioned, Rui, was sort of this disparity of charges. And I think what we think of when we hear that is residential versus commercial. But the situation that exists today, if I'm not wrong, is that every business out there is charged the same $300. So, a 100,000 square foot big box store is being charged the same $300 a year as the 300 square foot mom's yarn business. Is that correct?
It's, the actual charge in the existing direct charge is five cents per square foot up to a maximum of $300.
Okay.
And $300 was set if the property was sprinkled. And as you know, most businesses are sprinkled today. So, $300 is the number. The reality is, when you look at five cents per square foot, you get to $300 at 6,000 square feet. So, anything less than 6,000 square feet would actually pay a little bit less than the $300. But certainly, anything between 6,000 feet and 100,000 square feet, they're being charged $300 no matter what size, no matter what activity. It doesn't matter. $300 is what they pay.
Great. Thank you for that clarification. That really helps me understand that issue. So, this is an opportunity to equalize some of those really unequal impacts on businesses and residential firms.
That is correct.
I really want to thank you both for coming forward today and for all the work that you have done on this. I think it's very important that we do allow taxpayers, and so, we're clear, we're calling this a tax because that is what it is. We're not putting some fancy name on it and pretending it's anything other than what it is. But I think it's very important that we allow local taxpayers to make local decisions about the level of service they are willing to pay for. And I agree with Supervisor Holmes that we probably need to take a larger, more global picture of this because it's going to continue to be a problem for all the various fire districts and other special districts, not just fire districts, moving forward. But those are really all my comments on it, and I thank you for your work.
I'm sure I have another comment regarding the commercial charge. North Auburn Ofor Fire needs a new ladder truck. Many of those big box stores, a ladder truck will be needed. If there's a fire in the center of the store, they need a ladder truck in order to attack the fire. And so, it's appropriate that commercial, particularly the big boxes, pay their, you know, the reasonable share to share in keeping the fire district.
If I can add on Supervisor Holmes, the common misconception with the ladder truck is that it's only there for the ladder. It's actually there for a number of purposes, salvage and putting that business back into business as soon as possible. Historically, our ladder trucks carry salvage and ventilation equipment on them, and their purpose is to remove smoke, remove water from the building to put that building back into service as quick as we can. It could be from a fire. It could be from a malfunction of the sprinkler system. It could be flooding caused by rain. But that's the purpose of that particular piece of apparatus. Not only does it fill that function, but it is also part of the requirement for their insurance rating. If we don't have that piece of equipment, their insurance rates go up because the rating goes down. So, one of the things that we'll be coming back to the board with here in the future is replacement of that ladder truck regardless of whether or not this initiative passed. It's just something that we have to do to maintain as much of the level of service in that area as we can.
Supervisor Yular?
Just a question. I seem to recall from our previous conversations on this topic that a significant number of the calls for service are medical related and that one of the primary generators of those calls for service that are medical related is the county. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And yet, under this proposal, obviously, the county doesn't pay. Has the county engaged with the fire district to figure out how we might help cover costs for service that our county responsibilities are borne from a county operations standpoint that would reduce the costs then to the ratepayers who actually do pay?
Supervisor Yular, the one thing I will say is that we have had a contract between the county and formerly Placer Consolidated, now North Auburn Ofor Fire, on an annual basis in the amount of about $49,000 a year to help fund some of the fire protection and prevention functions that ultimately are delivered by North Auburn Ofor Fire. I think as a result of this initiative, it does give us an opportunity to take a look at that $49,000 amount and determine if it's still appropriate. Based on square footage, if you compare the county's square footage, it might be a little bit low, but it's really pretty close. If we were to charge the square footage amount as indicated in this report, we're pretty close to where we should be as a county in terms of funding service if we consider the county as we would any other business.
But you indicated that that was primarily for fire-related, whereas the majority of the calls for service are medical-related.
And I'm including emergency medical in that amount.
The only reason I ask this is I fully anticipate that it's a possible vulnerability that somebody in opposition to this on the ballot might seek to exploit.
I understand.
That, you know, somehow the North Auburn residents are being asked to subsidize the county operations. And so, I just want it to be clear that we are, as a county, taking steps to make sure that the costs that are borne by the district related to our operations, that we're paying our fair share.
Understand.
Thank you.
Understand.
Supervisor Holmes?
I was on the board when we brought that forward. I was on the consolidated board when we brought that forward to the county to see about how that disparity could be addressed. And at that time, I believe Mr. Dan Christopherson had the authority to appropriate $49,000 to Placer Consolidated Fire District to provide that service.
All right. So, we are being asked to approve a resolution and introduction of an ordinance. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll now move on to Facility Services, Hidden Falls Regional Park Expansion, Project 04717. Mark Wrightout.
Morning, Madam Chair.
And Andy Fisher presenting.
Mark Wrightout, Facility Services, here today to come back. It's an item that we discussed back in 2011. We're looking to go forward with the bridges at this time, and there are several actions that we'll ask your board to take today. The first being to approve the plans and specifications and authorize staff to solicit bids for the bridge project. The estimated construction cost, $1,189 million. The second item is to approve a resolution that authorizes the Director of Facility Services or his designee to award and execute the contract upon review of County Council and Risk Management, and then take necessary actions for change orders pursuant with the Public Contract Code and the Purchasing Manual. The third and final action that we're requesting today is to approve a budget revision, which moves $745,309 from the Open Space Fund, $118,500 from SMD-1, and then $60,000 from SMD-3. And this will fully fund the project 4717 in the Capital Projects Account. Essentially, we were before your board on April 12, 2011, and requested the same action. At that time, there were a few outstanding items that have since cleared themselves up. There was an issue with the grant with Sierra Nevada Conservancy, and the Resources Agency grant was suspended. The other item were some outstanding federal and state approvals for the project that we've now received. The sole item that's out- The sole item that's outstanding is a Section 404 permit from the Corps of Engineers that we understand is forthcoming. It's being reviewed by SHIP-O at this time. The benefit to this suspension of the bidding, we actually didn't receive the bids, we thought it was prudent to do that. We've had the opportunity to look at the planning for the Westerly Bridge, that's the bridge that can carry full highway loading, fire trucks, et cetera, across Coon Creek from north to south. And we've come up with an alternative for Steel Trust Bridge, which we're hopeful will reduce the project cost. There are some approach road improvements that are needed for the Easterly Bridge, and some culverts on ranch roads that we folded into the bid package. We think this would be a more efficient way to bid that. The other thing that's kind of interesting is we've found their monies available through the Regional Water Quality Control Board. These are essentially fines for water quality violations at SMD-1 and 3. Their board approved a supplemental environmental project, which allows $178,500 in total to be used towards the bridge project, which is, we feel a good use of those monies. So essentially, we're asking for your board's approval to proceed with bidding the project. We're prepared to do that shortly, and with the current schedule, would receive the bids the 22nd of February. And that's why we're asking for delegation of the award. We want to be able to start construction as close to April 15th as possible, to hopefully have the project wrapped up by the Flood Board's November 1st moratorium on construction in the flood channel. It may be a fall 2012 opening, but there might be some benefits also to waiting till 2013, giving some of the ranch roads and other areas to revegetate before we open the park. So if you have any questions, Andy Fisher and I are available.
I don't see any questions. Oh, there's Robert Slade.
Just wanted to take another opportunity to thank you, Andy, and all of Facility Services for the management of the park. I have, last year, had a lot of occasions actually to get out there, actually was out there Christmas afternoon, and it's just amazing to me how popular it is and how nicely it's kept. So Jim and the gang, I just hate to pass up an opportunity to thank you guys for the great work you've done out there, and that it's so heavily used.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Absolutely. Tom?
I just want to clarify one item. I asked Mark to follow up on, relative to the expenses, nearly $900,000 of this is grants or redirected fines. There's only about $300,000 that's out of the Open Space Fund. So the vast majority of the funding does come from special dollars that can only be really utilized and redirected to this, that would have been spent outside the county.
Thank you.
And if we were to have any cost savings realized on this, would those dollars go back to the Open Space Fund?
Yes, because the grant funds and the SMD fine funds would be specific to this site only.
Excellent, thank you. Anyone in the audience want to comment on this item? Seeing none, what's the pleasure of the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
And that's a roll call, I'm so sorry, because we have a budget revision.
Oh, we do need Supervisor Euler back.
Yeah, we do.
Well, there's one devil, let me go find the other one.
Came to work today, Tony. We're waiting for Supervisor Euler, this is a roll call, so we need all four here. Anyone know any good jokes while we're waiting?
I thought this was an easy item. What you guys?
Oh, no, you already did.
Holmes?
Euler?
Hello? Yes.
Montgomery.
Yes. All right. We all better keep our day jobs.
That should be good viewing at home?
I'm sorry?
That should be good viewing at home.
That should be good viewing at home, yes, it should. All right, at this point, we will move on to Department Item Number Six, Health and Human Services, Community Clinic. These are two contracts with some physicians, presented by Dr. Mark Starr.
Thank you. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Mark Starr, Director of Community Health, Community Clinics, and Animal Services. Item 6A is requesting that you approve contract employee agreements with John Jackson, M.D., and James Fuller, M.D., as physicians for Placer County Community Clinics, beginning in January and going through June of 2013. These would have a combined compensation not to exceed $330,000, and we also ask to authorize the chairman to sign subsequent amendments up to 10% of the individual contract amounts. This total is the combined compensation for both physicians, and it is for the entire seventeen and a half month contract period that is listed. As you know, Placer County is mandated by state law to provide medical care to low-income adult residents that don't have insurance. Our community clinics provide this care, as well as care to patients with Medi-Cal, Medicare, and other programs. We do this at our four clinic locations throughout the county, and we serve over 12,000 patients in a year, using over 31,000 visits to serve these patients. These extra physician contracts will allow our community clinics to continue to address the needs of these patients, and to operate with the most cost-efficient, efficient and flexible staffing model. Both physicians, Dr. Jackson and Dr. Fuller, are experienced and board certified, one of them in family medicine and one in OBGYN. The compensation in these contracts is in line with the county pay scale for physicians, which has not changed since 2006, and is about 10 to 20% less than the cost of part-time or temporary physicians in the private sector. The costs for these contracts are covered by federal and state reimbursement, and are included in the current year budget, and of course will be included in our 2013 budget. Any questions?
Seeing none from my board, are there any questions or comments from the audience? Seeing none, what's the will of the board? All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll now move on to Children's System of Care, approving selection of Sierra Forever Families as recommended, and Richard Connect, presenting.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Richard Connect with the Children's System of Care. If you'll indulge me just for a moment, I wanted to acknowledge the thoughtful and kind words from Andy Fisher this morning that your board heard. And while we agree that we have terrific CSOC team members that facilitate adoptions and great partners in our courts, we're mindful that the real heroes are the parents in Placer County like Brian and his family, or Andy and his family, sorry, who open their hearts and homes for our at-risk youth. Growing up a foster child is a terrific stigma that can be multi-generational, and removing that stigma is a gift that keeps on giving, and we're blessed in Placer to have terrific families like Andy and his, and we just appreciate that. I'm joined this morning by Dr. Twyla Abrahamson, who is the Assistant Director in the Children's System of Care, and she'll present our item for your review.
Madam Chair and board members, this Children's System of Care contract with Sierra Forever Families will provide specialized behavioral health services to adoptive children and their families. So unlike Mr. Fisher, it doesn't sound like sometimes people actually do need a bit more help. So Placer County has placed an average of 45 foster children into permanent adoptive homes each year since 2000. We have found that even at this most exciting time in their lives, both the children and families sometimes need assistance to adjust to each other and to create a new family. We also occasionally have children who, years later, experience adjustment issues or emerging mental health issues, and these post-adoption services would be available for these children as well. The contract is the result of a competitive request for proposals, which was released on August 17, 2011, and was fully compliant with county policy. These services will be funded by state and federal mental health dollars, and no county match is required. This contract is in the amount of $278,000 to provide these services from February 1, 2012, through June 30, 2013. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions from any board members? Seeing none, any questions from anyone in the audience? Seeing none, what's the will of the board? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right, we will now adjourn as the Placer County Board of Supervisors, and we will convene as the Placer County Redevelopment Agency Board. We will be hearing a redevelopment agency item, probably the last we'll hear, as the redevelopment agency. Ray James, presenting.
Good morning. I'm here to talk about Item Number 7A. 7A is requested here to California Assembly Bill 936, which became law on January 1 of this year. Assembly Bill 936 requires that the California Redevelopment Agency adopt a resolution indicating whether or not the agency has forgiven any loans, advances, or indebtedness owed to it by another public entity during the period January 1, 2010, through December 31, 2011. This action is actually a companion to the earlier item you heard, Item 3B. This item requests that you adopt a resolution declaring that this agency has not forgiven any loans, advances, or indebtedness owed by a public agency during the period January 1, 2010, through December 31, 2011.
Thank you. Any questions, comments from the board? Anyone in the audience? Will of the board? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. 7B?
Item 7B is a request to your board to adopt a resolution amending the agency's payment schedule for enforceable obligations, and that the amended version be posted on our website and submitted to the County Auditor Controller, the State Controller, and the State Department of Finance. The amended obligation payment schedule is included in our staff memo and reflects updated expenditures and budget generated by the revised dates imposed by the Supreme Court decision. Additionally, the amended payment schedule includes obligations that were inadvertently omitted from the previously adopted schedule on August 26, by this board on August 26. It also identifies staff costs and professional service contracts associated with the successor agency, which are within the limits prescribed by law. As required by law, the amended obligation payment schedule does not include any expenditures for new projects or to support nonessential agency operations.
Any questions or comments from the board? Anyone in the audience? Seeing none, will of the board? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ray. We will now adjourn as the Placer County Redevelopment Agency Board and reconvene as the Placer County Board of Supervisors. This takes us to Departmental Item 8 from the Sheriff's Office. Janice Gage, presenting. Good to see you, Janice.
Janice Gage from the Sheriff's Office. I'm here to request your approval this morning of a budget revision to appropriate $511,331 in California multijurisdictional methamphetamine program funding. That's short, that's long for CalMet. The funding is being appropriated to provide for several areas of utility in our Special Investigations Unit and our Special Operations Unit at the Sheriff's Office. We're going to use $166,000 to provide for our Special Investigations Unit Task Commander, Bill Olson, he's in the audience if you have questions later for him, and also to provide for additional deputies, some overtime salaries and benefits for those deputies, and some overtime. It's a repurposing of funding that was previously provided in a regional manner to other jurisdictions led by Yolo County. The money is now going to counties, one by one. We're going to be using it to go after street trafficking of this insidious drug, and it's going to a good purpose. We're requesting that your board approve this appropriation of funds.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Anyone in the audience? Seeing none? All those in favor? Oh, roll call, sorry.
Euler?
Roll call.
Why can't? Holmes? Montgomery?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, at this time, we will adjourn to closed session. Can you cancel?
The board will go into closed session and take up the items on page 4, Item 9, several litigation matters, a property matter, and a labor negotiation matter, and we will report back later.
Thank you.